Saying it's.
Yeah, we're starting with that one.
Right.
We're good. We're live.
Yeah. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for April 11th, 2022. The first item will be the proposed rulemaking under the City Administrative Procedure Act, Kappa draft rules.
Okay, so with this one, we're actually going to defer our decision. The board staff is still in the process of researching issues that were raised during the public hearing on this proposed rule on March 28th, 22. Hence, we will defer to on the rule today, and I want to thank the members of the public for bringing these issues to our attention. So we'll set another date for a decision. Okay?
Okay, so now we're back to the review session for April 11th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. session. The following are adjournments. Item number two, 914-86BZ, 19 East and Parkway, Brooklyn. Item number three, 2019-32BZ, 801 Co-op City Boulevard Bronx, 2020-67A, One Ballard Avenue, Staten Island. The following is a postponement. 26803BZ, 14555 Guy Brewer Boulevard, Queens. A deferral is next. Item number six, 2019-198, 40-1728 Avenue, Queens. Decision items. Item number seven, 39747BZ, 640111 Woodhaven Boulevard, Queens. This is an amendment.
Okay, the revised statement of facts was submitted. So unless other commissioners found things that should have been taken care of, I'd like to make a motion to grant no conditions.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Don't hear you. You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you. This application's been granted. Item number eight, 13258BZ, 17-4517-55 Francis Lewis Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, all requested changes to the, sorry, wrong one. No submissions were required. So I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition, no use of Lot 41 for accessory storage, no use of storage or, sorry, no storage in outdoor storage sheds or in trailers permitted, maintain landscaping, asphalt and fencing as shown on the approved plans, replace, repair those things as needed, store the dumpsters at all times inside of the trash enclosure except when emptying. So based on those conditions, a motion to grant.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number nine, 1608BZ, 651-671 Fountain Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay. Although the record on this submission was closed, the applicant made a submission late Friday. I reviewed the submission. I was hoping that it included proofs that the efforts that were required to have been completed by the date set forth in the prior resolution to establish the C finding were in fact completed by those dates. However, instead, the materials made the same arguments already made previously, that the applicant asserts that those criteria were conditions and not the terms under which a prospective C finding could be made. After detailed review of the application with staff and BSA counsel, we have concluded that because the C finding was never made, the variance was neither granted nor vested, nor was there an application made within the given time period for a hearing to ascertain compliance with the terms and accomplishments of the findings. In the context of a disagreeable and often an offensive site condition and an uncooperative owner, the resolution that left the C finding to be established at an early date in the future was, I thought, a clever approach on the part of the then-board towards requiring compliance. Unfortunately, that effort was unsuccessful, and the applicant now pays the price for that failure. I move therefore to dismiss the application for lack of jurisdiction since there is and was no variance upon which the board can make a determination. If the applicant believes that it can make the findings for a new variance to allow a nonconforming use, it is welcome to do so. So I make a motion to dismiss for lack of prosecution.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
No.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Uh, no. Are we gonna discuss this?
You can discuss it. You can discuss.
Do we want to reopen, or we don't have to reopen?
No, we're not opening.
Okay, fine.
So I read the resolution again, and while I understand the position that the board's taking, and I can see how that interpretation, I don't read it the same way. I also caution that we, there is a reliance here, and one can argue that there are unclean hands in the, in the, the actions of the applicant. That being said, I think this is, this particular decision would be ripe for appeal because that interpretation that we're, when we're reading this resolution, the interpretation, we can't say it's completely unambiguous. I think it would have to be read in the light of the applicant, in the best light, most favorable to the applicant. Now, they relied on this variance that they were granted, whether or not we believe that they should have been granted, or that the language says that. The fact remains that it was held out to be granted. The other, our sister agencies acted as if it was granted. So as a matter of fact, this was a granted variance.
No, as a matter of fact, no, so, okay, I don't want to get into this in too much detail because we assume it's going to be the subject of litigation. So you've made your point, and the applicant has made its point, but it's clear it's going to be the subject of litigation, and the board stands on its position that the C finding was not made absent the accomplishment of those criteria. So I would say it's for a court to decide what the resolution says. Commissioner, do you want to say something? Yeah?
Yeah, I would just like to make a quick comment, having been here the first time around for this case. This was a very unusual case and an unusually written resolution. If you look at all of our resolutions, this was the first time that the board had ever stated a list of conditions that were required to be satisfied by date certain. Usually, the conditions of a resolution, the conditions of a grant are cited after the findings are made. It's a now, therefore, we find that you made all the findings, and these are the conditions of your approval. But this was the first time where the conditions were actually listed up in the findings of the C finding and were very clearly, the resolution is written as such that without those conditions being implemented, the C finding was not found at the time. And it wasn't because this site was so not in compliance with any operating conditions for like 10 years, more than 10 years. And so I think the board at the time, which I was a part of it, wanted to ensure that there would be future compliance with anything that we granted them. And so I think that's the difference here. And I think that the board doesn't have a lot of oversight ability, but one thing we can do is we can revoke variances if there's noncompliance. We can do that. And so what the board did was they gave a blueprint to future boards that basically clued them into the fact that this is not your ordinary renewal. Pay close attention here, in any way that they could possibly clue in future boards. And so that's why I think this is a separate, a different situation, and one that takes a lot more examination and analysis by the board.
Thank you very much. Okay, so everyone voted, so the case is dismissed for lack of, understood that there is dissenting views.
A lack of jurisdiction.
That's our, lack of jurisdiction. Thank you, Chase. Okay.
Okay, move on. Item number 10, 20161219BZ, 7345 Myrtle Avenue, Queens.
Okay, there was no required submission, so motion to grant.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application is granted. Item number 11, 2017-48339, sorry, 339 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island.
Sorry. Okay, they did provide proof of certificate of correction and violation paid. So they're requesting a four-year extension. So the condition is that they maintain the site. There's also an E designation on the site, E262. A Phase II work plan was provided. There's an email. And the work will proceed with the Phase II, or the project will proceed with the Phase II. Is that correct, Joe?
Uh, yeah, but DOB has approved the permit.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks. All right, thank you. All right, so motion to grant on that condition.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application is granted. Item number 12, 202119BZ, 36-21 Prince Street, Queens.
No submission was required. We had requested that the applicant refile with the FAA to provide them with the information in the proper NAVD-88 datum. However, apparently, this is not possible. An FAA directed that they do the following, which is, and I introduce it like that because that's the condition of approval. So it says, once the structure has reached the greatest height, it's required that FAA Form 7460-2 Part II be filed within five days and enter the most up-to-date information, and then it has to be filed. So our resolution needs to make very clear, and I said this at the last hearing, but I want to say it again, the data provided to FAA is different from what is shown on the plans. FAA and DOB should be aware of the following, and the approval is conditioned on FAA and DOB making the necessary adjustments to their records. The survey is in NAVD-88. The site elevation known as SE was, that was given to FAA, was converted to NGVD, not NAVD-88. The FAA determination of no hazard letter shows the site elevation in NGVD, but I don't think it's aware that it's in NGVD. The height above the mean sea level, which is known as AMSL, is the addition of the site elevation and the above-ground level figures. The FAA and DOB should be aware that there are disagreements between the AMSL and the AGL on the drawings as compared to the FAA determinations of no flight hazard. No CO can, shall be issued without this correction. Okay, so that's the conditions, and if counsel needs me to copy paste, I'll send that to them. Okay, so, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to grant on that condition.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Sorry. Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number 13222022-BZY, 55 Ganza Ward Street, Manhattan.
The applicant provided BSA resolutions on similar cases showing that the board typically grants the extension of time from the date of the vote rather than backdated to the permit lapse. Hence, the applicant will have three months from today's date to complete, to TCO. If applicant does not believe that will be enough time, they should file immediately for an 11-332B extension. And so based on that, I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. SOC calendar, continued hearing items. Item number 14, 80361BZ, 1416 Highland Boulevard, Staten Island.
Photos provided of the site show that it looks, I think it looks very good. Some were a repeat of the January submission, so we've seen those photos before. The steel trash enclosure door, which we were waiting for, has been installed. It looks good. So I'd like to thank the owner for their careful cooperation. I note a few of the slats in the chain link fencing are missing, so I just asked the owner to please install those and keep that installation up regularly. That's the problem with those slats, that they're sort of hand-installed, and they don't last that long. There is a letter from the neighbor in the mixed-use house at 1422 Highland Boulevard asking that lighting adjustments still allow, quote, "little light" along the perimeter for safety reasons. The applicant can work with that neighbor to achieve the collective desired goal. The last version of the lighting study, there was no lighting study included in the set of drawings that was submitted. So I'd like the last version of the lighting study to be included in the plan set, but I'm not sure which one, if any, that was submitted on December 23rd, '21, is representative of the final analysis because they are adjusting some of the lights, and I don't know whether that study represents the adjustment. So they should give us one submission of a lighting study that represents what they're going to be doing, because they show adjustments on the new plans, Z4 and Z8. So other than that, I think the project is ready to close. And just to remind about the conditions, maintain the fencing, landscaping, asphalt, trash enclosures, replace slatting in the chain link, keep lighting away from residential properties that front on Reed Avenue and Jerome Road, and work with the neighbor at 1422 Highland Boulevard to adjust to acceptable levels for that neighbor. Okay, so I'll go to the other commissioners. Vice Chair Chanda?
Um, thank you. I was satisfied with the submission, and I have no other comments.
Okay. Commissioner Ali Brown? You're muted if you're speaking.
Me?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a very unstable internet connection that I'm trying to correct, but I have no que, no more questions for this site. I actually think it looks like it's in beautiful condition, so much improved.
Yeah, great, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is that I agree that they should provide us with a luminous spread to act as a reference or like a base luminous spread for what the neighbor is accepting for now. Just in case, if in the future the neighbors come back and complain about that, we can have something that the previously agreed to. Other than that, I believe the site is in very good condition, and I'm satisfied with the application. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Shabetta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm satisfied with this application.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I don't, new cases. Item number 15, 18285BZ, 2091120th Street, Brooklyn. Am I calling the next one together or just separating them out?
Um, they're listed separately. Just call them separately. They're across the street from each other, so it's not the same site.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's 18285BZ, 2091120th Street for this.
Okay, there are no notice requirements for extensions of time. I see from the description, and as we have heard from other applicants, that there are delays at DOB that have prevented obtaining the CFO, but there doesn't look like there's too much left to do. The post-approval amendment at DOB's website was approved on January 19th of this year. I don't know if that's reflected in the submission made on March 24th. Photos of the site provided by applicants show that it is listed as, quote, "available" with a real estate agent's name on it. So I'd like to know what's the actual status of the use. This was an August 2017 extension of term grant, but we would toll any discontinuance during the COVID emergency. So, you know, tell us what's going on, kind of. The resolution should acknowledge this, actually, the COVID tolling for future boards, so that they might not, for instance, if there was a discontinuance in the last few months, there should be an awareness on the resolution that those wouldn't count because of the emergency. And, you know, it's like, when's the emergency? I'm sort of relying on what the governor has been doing because there's still a state of emergency in some form by the governor, so. But I'd also ask, please put a coat of paint on the exterior, including the doors. It's not been that long, but it, they don't look so good. And this is a request for a two-year extension. Those are my comments. Vice Chair?
Thank you. Um, I also, not knowing what exactly is the current use of the facility, the prior grant had a condition that there be a no parking sign on the front facade so that no vehicles would be parked on the sidewalk. Again, not knowing what the current use is, don't know the applicability of it, but assuming it is still similar kind of use, that sign probably should be there, that I didn't see in the photo. That, otherwise, I do not have any other comments.
Okay, good. Ms. Ali Brown?
I had a similar question, in that they said they had a new tenant, which was called Circular Distributor, and I wanted to know if the tenant took possession of the site yet because it looks as if it's vacant.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing further to add.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Thank you, Chair. No further comments from me.
Thanks.
Okay, item number 16, 18385BZ, 206-820th Street, Brooklyn. Same thing, extension of time.
There are no notice requirements for extensions of time. This building is across the street from the building just heard under calendar 182-85BZ, and in common ownership on the same approval timeline due to delays at DOB. Photos provided by applicant also show the site as available, so please describe the current use and occupancy. And again, our resolution should reflect a tolling period for discontinuance for the duration of the COVID emergency. Please, again, paint the front wall and doors. That was a comment in the 2017 resolution. The board made comments about sort of the shabby appearance of the building, so, and in response, the applicant painted, so it needs another coat of paint after four years. We're actually almost five. So, and again, this is a request for a two-year extension. So Vice Chair Chanda?
So, um, thank you. So the applicant had stated that there is a new tenant, and the tenant's operation seems to be like someone will come in the AM to pick up a vehicle and return it at nine. The prior statement of fact states that the vehicles are picked up in the AM, and then, I mean, the prior condition was a six-day operation that would be from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So I would like to know, what is the nature of the use? If it is not a contractor site, is it like a vehicular drop-off pickup, like a vehicle storage area? And if they are being dropped off at night, if the vehicles are being dropped off at night, then they're not meeting the hours of operation the prior board has approved. So I would like to kind of get a clarification on that, in the nature of the operation, and it needs to comply because it's just an extension of time, not a term.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks. Commissioner Brown?
Similar question. What is the current occupancy?
Okay, Commissioner Sheta?
No additional comments. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, just a second. Commissioner Shabetta?
Nothing further from me. Thank you, Chair.
Item number 17, 17407BZ, 1935 Pony Island Avenue, Brooklyn. This is an extension of term.
Right. We have proof of service of initial application and of notice of hearing to officials. Community Board recommends approval. This special permit expired in June 2018, and the application to extend the term was filed on April 22nd, 2020, so less than two years after the expiration. A waiver of Rule 1-07.3B2 has been requested. Proof of continuous use provided through photographs and a statement of why substantial prejudice would occur if not granted. The applicant went through the conditions of the grant and demonstrated that the bus stop had been moved as directed in the resolution, as can also be noted on the photos. They provided an invoice to show they had to pay something for this, but you can also see on the photos, it's in a different place. Based on photos, the site looks very good, and the landscaping appears to be doing its job to shield residents as much as possible from the use. I don't, however, see photos of the area behind the convenience store. Please provide, always provide photos looking all the way around the perimeter of the site. And when I say that it's not street views, which we can get easily from Google, it's interior. You stand inside the site, and you look at the perimeter, and then you stand at the perimeter and you look to the inside. Those are things not available on Google Street View. According to satellite imagery, the triangular area behind the building has storage sheds and other materials. The plans dated 2014 show that area was supposed to be landscaped, although it looks like it is next to one-story commercial structures, but it's still not consistent with the plans. The proposed plans show the area already has, quote, "gravel over weed barrier," unquote. Photos would help us understand what that is. The air pump vacuum were shown on the 2014 plans adjacent to a residence, so that it's not that it's not in an approved location, but I wonder why that can't be moved to the other side, which is adjacent to the convenience store, and commercial is like a tire shop next door to that, so that's a better location for it. A proper and well-done lumen spread diagram was done near the residential property line with lights on and off at top of fence and three feet above grade with nighttime photos, some of which are mislabeled "lights off," but they can't be lights off because you can see the lights on. And they show that levels are high at the property line, at the residential property line, so adjustments should be made to the lamps or pole heights and measurements retaken. But I do appreciate the quality of the study. It's really good. The tax lot has several DOB bin numbers which show DOB construction violations from 2015 and 2018 that have not been certified. Please explain those. Also, there's a few shapes on the drawings that are not Also, there's a few shapes on the drawings that are not labeled. Which I figured out from photos are drain and manhole covers. So please label those. I'd like to know what remains to be done to obtain a CO. I don't see many open items on the two thousand fourteen new building application. Which shows some progress made until March of twenty twenty, then nothing more. So I don't really understand what, that's been a long time of maybe no progress on obtaining the CO. So please explain that. It's a year of not submitting new documents to DOB. So, Vice Chair Shonda?
Overall, the site really looks in very good condition and it's well-maintained and as is the landscaping. With regards to the air vac tower and its proximity to residential. The alternate would be more closer to the. I mean, instead of it being, again, closer to the residential lot line, it would have to be closer to Coney Island Avenue frontage. And given that that's one of the entry and exit points and there are bus stops there. I don't know if that is going to be in the way of the maneuverability, so I would be okay. And this is very much in the corner. The current location is right at the corner of Avenue P. So I was kind of okay with that location with those caveats. I had a question with regards to the violations. I'm assuming those violations were resolved, but other than that, I have no additional comments.
Can, can you just clarify the caveats? Sorry.
The caveat was that the current location of the air vac and the, the tower, the vacuum tower. It's right at Avenue P. It's very much right at the front of Avenue P. And whereas an alternate location, if you don't want to disturb any of the other residential lot line would be to relocate it as close to Coney Island frontage. And the only place that I could think of that might be viable would be right next to the parking lot one. Which would be very close to the exit-entry curb cut and the bus stop. So I wasn't sure if it's a great place and, and if it would affect the maneuverability as opposed to where it is located, currently located.
Well, so, but the issue with these things is not the air, the air pump, because that's required, we learned by law, right? It's the noise from the vacuum. So in some cases, we say, take out the vacuum. It's going to be a disturbance and there's no better place to put it. So that's what really, I think, should be looked at, like the maneuverability issue. If you move it to another location versus not having the vacuum at all. Because it's not like this is a, well, vacuums are just not a requirement, right? Okay, Commissioner Rattley Brown?
Um, I have no additional comments. I, I think that it's kind of challenging where to put the vacuum machine. Just like it's kind of challenging on this site where one would move the masonry trash enclosure without getting in the way of the vehicle circulation. So I'm actually okay with where they are, especially the trash location with its line of harbor videotape that are kind of in between it and the lot line. So at least that provides additional screening.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So I'm, I'm fine with that. No additional comments.
So you find the location of the vacuum?
Yes, I'm fine with the location of both of those items and I don't have additional questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you, Chair. Regarding the Lumen spread, I believe the, the OS, like some adjustments to the currently existing lighting system to get the Lumen, the foot candles down to acceptable values. On the issue for the, for the vacuum and the air. I, let me say, I, I use both and, and I believe the noise coming from the vacuum or the, the air are more or less the same. So it's not a matter of which one is the requirement and which one is not. If, if one of them is there, it's, it's the same exact thing. And the, by the way, they are not used like simultan- simultaneously most of the time. That, when I look at the current location at the beginning, I, I put a comment in, in my, I put one of my comments that they need to relocate it. And then I took a tour around the, the site and I, I looked at like alternatives. And I believe the only alternative that makes it away from that residential lot line is to make it all the way at the corner of the convenience store on the other street. And if, if you locate it there, you're going to create a conflict between the vehicles going out from the station and, 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 and that vacuum thing. If, if you have a car doing vacuum or if you have a car like putting air in, in one of the tires. It's, it's going to be a mess. It's gonna, it's gonna probably block the cars that are trying to get out of the station. So I, I believe, I believe the same, that same exercise has been done by the previous board. And I believe practically, I don't see any other location than locating this vacuum and, and, and air at, at longer that residential line. I, I believe the applicant picked a very good location by dragging this, this vacuum all the way to the street. It's at least, it's not like adjacent to one of the bedrooms or it's, it's close to the street. So I'm, I'm fine with the current location.
Okay, okay, this is helpful. Thank you, everyone. Commissioner Shaveta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm fine with the location as well. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Move on? Um, yeah, I just want to make sure I've picked up one. Okay, yeah.
Okay, item number eighteen, six dash fourteen BZ, twenty-five twenty-five Victory Boulevard, Staten Island. This is an extension of time to complete construction.
There are no notice requirements for extensions of time. So there are new, because it's an extension of time, I'm curious. There are new drawings and the architect provides a list of minor changes on three of the drawings. Although it doesn't include the removal of the remediation equipment on the list. So this is more like a procedural question. It's an extension of time. But there are new drawings with some, the changes just for Carlo's information are new pedestrian ramps that are really on the sidewalk, so that's not part of the site. Updated wall signs to allow permitted sign area, so I guess the sign was. I don't know whether that's an increase in the sign size or not. And updated proposed floor and roof plans to what's called a permitted layout. I, I don't know what that means. So I, I don't know whether this has to be then filed in a different way or it's so minor that it's okay for us to accept revised plans. That shouldn't also, if they, if we accept them, indicate that the remediation equipment and enclosure has been removed from the site as well. So I'd like to know whether the station is operating while construction is underway. The statement of fact provides information about trash pickup and hours. Are those future conditions or current ones? A timeline of sorts, construction timeline of sorts was provided indicating two-year extension is needed. So, Vice Chair Shonda?
I'm sorry, I just muted myself. I have no comments on it. I looked at the signage. The only thing I would say, the proposed signage for Victor Boulevard, though increased a little bit. The total surface area and the illuminated, it is still complying with the underlying regulations. So I was of the understanding if it is, if we have said it has to be pursuant to the underlying regulation and it is complying, then that change should not, should be considered a minor. And that's how I.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's not whether it's minor or major. On extensions of time, we don't normally get new.
Right, right, but, but since it's complying with C one, it's, it's just information that's being provided without it requiring any. All right, that's what I said.
Okay. Commissioner Rattley Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Thanks. Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you, Chair. The only thing I want to say is they are proposing the, to increase the hours for the convenience store from six PM Monday through Friday and close on Saturday and Sunday. They are proposing twenty-four-seven operation and I, I want to say I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Okay, well, so then that's another part of the point. This is an extension of time. And they're. So the, yeah, so it's sounding like even if it's a minor amendment, that they need to file it as an amendment. It doesn't mean that it goes into a big deal. It's just, they weren't filing it as amendment where we can change the hours of operation, which are actually in the resolution. So once you touch the resolution, it needs to be an amendment. So applicant should discuss this and then they can just simply update the application materials. There's an extra fee if it's an amendment like that. Okay, thanks. So to clarify that they're doing that. Okay, Commissioner Shaveta?
I, I have one question. Would a letter, a letter of substantial compliance be sufficient or do they have to?
If you touch the, if you touch anything in the resolution, it becomes an amendment. Letters of substantial compliance cannot go to the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
I have no further comments.
It also makes no sense when you're before us to then rely on a letter, which is a whole other process. It's much better to just stay, which, by the way, letters also have a fee.
No.
So much better to just stay with us, have a discussion and then clarify the thing, so. So, but you have no other comments?
None.
Aside that, okay. All right. Tony. I'm waiting. So a statement regarding a rooftop full-height parapet. It's under construction, so this is the part that I'm. Oh, no, no, sorry, it's not under construction. Yeah, I'm just reading a seeker comment from Jello. And so there is a statement in the recitals of the previous resolution regarding a rooftop full-height parapet to shield the rooftops' mechanical equipment and mitigate any noise or, or visual effects on neighbors. So the question is, was that done? There is also a condition, or was that done or is that being done? Et cetera. Okay. And, yeah, it is under construction. Sorry, I keep reading back and forth, Tony. All right, thank you.
Item number nineteen, one twenty-eight fifteen BZ through one thirty fifteen BZ. Six eighty-six eighty-two-six eighty-four Van Duser Street, Staten Island. This is an extension of time to complete construction.
There are no notice requirements for extensions of time. This application was approved in two thousand eighteen.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, you're breaking up. You're breaking up, Madam Chair.
Okay, I don't know what to do.
Well, now you're, now you're good. Now you're.
So, no good? Hold on a second, I'm, hold on. How about now? Good. I'm going to try and alternate and just in case, but it'll take me a while to get there.
Do you want me to re-announce the, the calendar?
Yeah.
This, so this is one twenty-eight fifteen BZ through one thirty fifteen BZ. Six eighty-six eighty-two-six eighty-four Van Duser Street, Staten Island.
So. Requirements for extension of time. This application was approved in two thousand eighteen. I don't see activity on the DOB website. Nor signs of the proposed tax lot subdivisions for lots ninety-five, ninety-six, or ninety-seven. I'd like to know what's the status on this. I see from City Planning's Zap site, their ZAP site, that the applications were filed in two thousand twenty and that pre-hearing review is in process. And they're requesting a four-year extension. So that seems to be maybe what's holding up the DOB filings, that they're needing to obtain approvals for the special. What is it? There's a, it's a special area where you need to get approval on site contours and planting and so on. Okay, Vice Chair Shonda?
Thank you. Yeah, it seems the holdup is that the DCP and DOT with regards to the approval. So I, and this is the first request that has been made. I would be fine with granting this.
Okay. Vice, Commissioner Rattley Brown?
Did they give us a timeline? Because I could not find it. Because I would, I would like to.
No, they did. I think just in the statement said that where it is in terms of DEP approval, where it is with the city planning approval. They anticipate an approval from city planning by June of two thousand twenty-two. And, and basically. Which makes, I mean, they believe a maximum of four years. I mean, that is what they can get anyway.
Okay. I did read that. Thank you very much, Vice Chair. I just figured they should give us some indication going forward on when they plan to reach certain milestones. You know, like foundations, superstructure, that kind of thing. Final sign-offs and then C of O. It's pretty quick for them to do if they have some idea and we, of course, won't hold them to it. However, it would be an indication of committed forward motion.
Yes, right, because just waiting for other agency approvals doesn't mean your drawings are ready to file or DEP start, because DOT could be reviewing these and their objections would be, you still don't have city planning approval and things like that. You often do these things simultaneously. So it's true that there's, nothing's been filed at DOB since two thousand eighteen, so. Plus, they don't have, they don't have tax lot subdivision approval. So we keep looking at this as three tax lots, but it's actually one tax lot. So, um, okay, uh, thank you. Hold, hold on a second. Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, I believe they, they indicated in the statement that they are working with DOT, DEP, DCP. And, and the only thing that they got so far is the approval of, from DEP for the drainage. They also said that DCP and DOT applications were filed. However, I, I believe the extension we grant, if we grant, is going to be for completing that construction, not obtaining permits. So I believe they should have provided a timetable indicating what is going to be achieved when.
Right.
That's simple. Thank you.
Correct, correct. Thank you. Commissioner Shaveta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I also, I guess, third the notion of we need a timetable to know how long, to know when things are going to get done and, and so that we can make a decision on this.
Right, okay, thank you.
Item number twenty-twenty twenty-one sixty-eight A three forty-eight A. The, the A C S Street, Staten Island, I believe.
Yeah.
This is a proposed development of, on the school construction authority of a school located not fronting in a map street. And seeking a waiver of the General City Law Section thirty-six.
Right. We have proof of service of initial application and of notice of hearing to officials. Community Board recommends approval. As Mr. Tia's just said, this is a GCL thirty-six application for a school. But on, but it's a New York City school, so it has received mayoral zoning overrides of section twenty-four dash thirty-four, twenty-four dash five twenty-one, twenty-five dash thirty. The zoning resolution for front yards, front setbacks, and parking. We act, well, we can't give waivers on some of those. Okay, anyway. The site fronts on four CCO streets that are not final mapped. The, the borough president issued a street status letter showing that all have opinions of dedication for at least part of the record street with except for one portion of Stetcher, which is currently unimproved. City Planning issued approvals of authorization and certification for tree removal and planting substitution in the special South Richmond district on March. and planting substitution in the special South Richmond District on March twenty-second. So just basically two weeks ago. The project has been reviewed by DOT and school safety. School Safety issued a letter requesting um many, uh, many things, all of which were apparently shown on the approved builder's pavement plan. So um just to, just, I'm just going to name two of them, but they're shown on the pavement plan. They requested that a school construction authority install a curb and sidewalk along the north side of Island Street between Kingdom and Stetch, Kingdom Avenue and Stetcher Street. They also requested a thirteen-foot sidewalk and uniform curb alignment along the school frontage on Kingdom Avenue from Diceus to Island Street, matching the existing alignment from Diceus, from Diceus Street. And there's a list of many more, but each ca, in each case, school construction acknowledged that shown on the BPP. Likewise, DOT, as opposed to school, um, school safety, issued a list of requests that they say could be accomplished during the design development of the project um and which are shown on the builder's pavement plan. But their approval is conditioned on this work actually being done. So I would like their conditions, both school safety and DOT conditions, to be included in our resolution. So there's something recorded against the property, um, because we record our resolutions and also easily viewable on the biz website, because since very recently, I'm thrilled that now you can see our resolutions with a click to a link on the biz website. And um, all right, so uh, and so, for example, DOT requested that uh title searches be done of all the streets. And title searches were provided to us, but I don't know whether, they're not conclusive. I don't know that they dug very far and whether that's enough information for DOT and what they're trying to get at. They're looking for ownership of those streets. Um, I didn't, however, find fire department sign-off, which of course we need. So we need especially for GCL thirty-six applications. And there is a DEP conditional sign-off on backflow prevention assemblies and a sewer connection sign-off. Um, and um seekers complete because we are, the, the lead agency is actually the school construction authority on this. Okay, and Jella, if I left anything out, please jump in. Okay, um, so Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you. Um, this is a very complex project that needs to coordinate its approval with multiple city agencies. And I'm glad to see that the DOT conditions and the school uh safety conditions have been incorporated in the builder's pavement plan and that we have a mayoral approval and city planning commission approval. I really have no addition, and also now it seems we have a DEP conditional approval. So only thing we need is an FDNY and I think we are good to go. I hope so. So.
Okay. Um, right. Uh, Commissioner Ali Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Commissioner Sheta.
Same here. Nothing further. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaveta.
Uh, nothing further for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this concludes the public review session. We'll now commence with the public hearing unless you want to.
Yeah, let's just take a ten-minute walk-around break, just to stretch our legs before we jump into the hearing. Um, so we'll start at ten, eleven oh five. Okay? Okay, if everyone could come back, please. We love, okay, good.
Yeah.
Good morning. This is a New York City Board of Standards and Appeals public hearing for April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. The first item is SOC calendar, continued hearing item, item number fourteen, eight oh three sixty-one BZ, fourteen sixteen Highland Boulevard, Staten Island.
Okay. Can you allowing Andrew Stewart in? Is this also Elise's case?
Should be.
Should they? I'm allowing her in, but I don't know. She didn't raise her hand. Lisa mute, join in.
Hey, sorry.
Okay.
I am not prepared yet. Sorry. Was just talking to a client about um one of the calls, I mean, one of the hearings. Sorry. Hold on one second. You know, you can swear us in. I just need a second to get on with you, if that helps.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Yeah.
Okay. When you're ready, Ms. Holday, hold it there.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
Okay. You can proceed.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so the fourteen sixteen Island. So thank you so much for your comments. Really appreciate it. We were just proposing um lighting and we will up, provide an updated lighting plan per the proposed modification.
Yeah, I think that was the only issue, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so then let's go to the public. Okay, the case that we're, oh, wait for the screen to come up. Okay, so the case that we're currently.
Okay, so the case that we're currently discussing is 80361BZ1416 Highland Boulevard Staten Island. This is for an extension of term. If you wish to discuss, you may dial in at 6465588656. Enter the webinar ID number, which is 91416267096 pound. US, we present asked to put in the participant ID number, which you don't have to do. Just press pound. Once you're in the Zoom room, depress star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute to speak. If you are already in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, so how much time to submit those materials?
Andy, do you have a?
Um.
I'm on.
Probably a few months, only because I have to go out and actually do the modifications to the lighting that are proposed, the shields, they're going to switch out fixtures, things like that, and then redo the study. So they would need the time to coordinate the work and then the actual study itself, so.
So, I'm just thinking if there's another way of doing this. You're assuming you're going to make adjustments to the light, right?
Correct.
You have a target for those adjustments, right? What if you show, I see Commissioner shed his hands up. This is my suggestion. What if you show adjustments will be made to achieve target level X? Because that's the site that's adjacent to you to on high, what is it, on Highland Boulevard. They said that they want to maintain some degree of lighting. So, that's a target amount. And then the sites to the rear that have their rear yards that face on to, what is it, Reed and and Jerome. Those sites, I'm not sure what they are reading at now. Those should be, the target should be zero at the property line, right? So, so if you show those as targets, if you're not there yet and you indicate adjustments will be made to achieve those targets, then we don't have to have you come back months from now, because I can see that you've been really working to this. I want to hold up decision for months.
That'd be fine. Yeah.
Nisheta, what do you think?
Yeah, I thought they already consulted the neighbor based on existing lighting levels. I'm not sure if the neighbor expressed he's okay with something. I, my understanding is that the neighbor looked at the lighting next door at the station and he said, that's satisfactory to me. I have no issue with that. Since, since this is not the case, I believe just, I want to be careful here, because this is going to be a precedent for too many cases in the future. I believe what should have, what should be done is finalize the lighting, show it to the neighbor, the neighbor is okay. Then take the readings or prepare the lighting diagram and note it on that lighting diagram that the shown lumen values are satisfactory to the neighbor. And then just sign this, this drone and give it to us. I'm not sure about the timeframe that it's going to be needed for achieving this. But we want to keep in our record something that, let's say that neighbor next door in five years from now changed. And, and another guy came in, he's not satisfactory with what's existing. It's going to be a complaint. Then if we ask, the future board asks the applicant to modify, then the applicant can say, you know what, I'm not going to modify it because it's pre-approved, like, like everything else on many other cases. It's been pre-approved. We don't want to like change it. We want to make the record clear for the future board that we accepted this, which is not in compliance with our criteria, just because the neighbor next door is satisfactory with something. And this something should be crystal clear in our record.
Right, but so that's why I'm suggesting, because we've been, this is the sixth hearing plus one adjournment. And we've been here in hearings with them since October of 2020. It's a long time. So when I, and they have been cooperative. And so, so, and we do know that we agreed that they should contact that neighbor. It's the, it's the neighbor who has this mixed use. So it's not so clear what's going on in the second floor of this building, which is a house. So it's only about that one neighbor to that one side on Highland, where there's sort of a negotiation going on. So I didn't understand from the letter from the neighbor, whether they were okay with the current lighting levels or can you use the word, I'm okay with a little light coming on to my property. I don't know if that's the current level or whether now it's book reading level, in which case they wanted it to be reduced. So what I would want to suggest is, I see Ms. Foladair's hand up just one second. What I'd want to suggest is that the, that the submission of the revised lighting diagram show zero lumen spread on the property line of the properties that face on Jerome and Reed. And that the adjustments will be made to get that there if it's not already zero, because I need to, can you open up the last, the last lumen spread diagram from 122321, Commissioner? And just see what it's showing along those property lines? Because what I remember was that the high levels are only on the Highland site, not on the Jerome Reed site. In which case, we don't really need to talk about them, because they've already measured that there's zero. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Foladair.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I think that because we've been talking about lighting back and forth, I wasn't in the conversation, because the operator and the BP maintenance person spoke with the neighbor next door and got the letter from them, but I think that they were telling them about, you know, our conversations with the BSA and lighting, and that's what we got the letter based off of. So they, they, we hadn't changed the light yet, but they had a conversation based on the conversations we've been having with the board to see what they're, what they wanted.
Right.
I don't know if that's helpful. I'm just trying to say what I've spoken to the client about and the operator and the maintenance person.
So whatever it is, it needs to be an agreement with the neighbor about providing a certain lighting level, right? And that, I agree that that needs to be made clear on our resolution that this was an agreement with the neighbor at the time, who submitted a letter, who was okay with whatever you show on your drawings as except as the lighting levels. I'm going to the lighting study right now. Lumen planet, top lights on, pre-adjustment. So you have pre-adjustment and post-adjustment. I'm not sure what that is. Does this mean that you actually didn't adjust? Or you, and you projected it, or you did adjust?
They did adjust in that post-adjustment.
Okay, so.
But then we had further, we did further proposal and a further modification on the last set of plans.
So the only set of lumen drawings that I have are from 122321. And then the set of drawings that you just submitted recently show, just on drawing four and eight, it shows something about an adjustment, but there's no lumen diagram that accompanies it. So I don't actually know what the effect of that is supposed to be. So I'm looking at the lumen spread diagram right now with the lights. It says lights on. Top of fence, lights on post-adjustment. This is from 1223. So you've got zero lumens on the property line at the rear. So that's like no longer an issue. On Reed and Jerome, not an issue, you achieved zero. Only place where you have point one, point two, point three, which is pretty low, is along the property line of the adjacent neighbor who said that they like a little light, right? If that's what you're achieving, this is part of question, I don't know, because I don't understand the post-adjustment comment versus the new drawings that you submitted on Z4 and BSA four and eight? That's, that show an additional adjustment to the light.
So we didn't get to totally zero when we had a conversation about it. So we were trying to propose other ideas if your board wasn't accept it. Like, we were trying to show you all different ways we could figure out how to get as little lighting as possible, so.
Okay. So that.
We were trying to not ignore your comments and just get at it in a lot of different.
Okay. Right. Oh, I see. So this one, the one that's called post-adjustment from 1226, this one says the pole light is disconnected. And this is with top of post lights on, I mean, top of fence lights on post adjustment. So you're not going to achieve point one, point two, point three, if you don't disconnect the posts, right? And let me see, at the pole, I mean, but there is, yeah, yeah, okay, I see also. You also disconnect the pole along Reed. Floodlights disconnected. So that's, those are the things that need to be changed on the drawings. Because at the moment, the only way you achieve zero on the Reed Jerome is by turning those lights off.
Okay.
So you need to tell us what is it you're going to do to achieve that for real, because turning the lights off isn't a solution. Or maybe it is, but one of them is your floodlight, it looks like, right up against the property line. So this is giving me a little more pause, because I'm not really sure how to do this. So. Yeah, Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I think, but you, based on the last hearing we had, where, you know, we were discussing the lighting levels and recognizing that we're doing our best to reduce them and maintain, you know, by the residential lot lines, but also maintain a safe, a safe working station, obviously. It can't be completely dark, which is why we came in with the proposal, the current set, where switching out the lighting fixture for a lower lumen lighting fixture, dark skies compliant, putting on lighting shields, removing some of the lights, those floodlights from the back of the building, the wall lights and stuff like that, to drop these levels down to, to acceptable levels, so.
Right.
Baffles on the canopy lights facing the residentials as well, things like that, so.
Okay, so now I'm, now I'm back to feeling like you need to do this stuff in order for us to know that you accomplished this stuff. Because I forgot, I remember my comments from the, one of the last times was turning the lights off isn't a realistic solution, because you need to operate, right?
Right.
You know, then the question was, what were you going to actually do to solve this? And so those drawings, Z4 and 8, show new lighting fixtures, but they don't project what's going to happen.
Right, we're showing them proposed right now, because we weren't sure how the board, you know, these, these are kind of things we discussed and went over with the client. And like we, like we were saying, like completely disconnecting, you know, the fixtures. Just wouldn't, wouldn't make the site safe. So we're doing, we're proposing everything we can to reduce the amount of lighting as much as possible while leaving those lights there. So it's what, it's what the client would, is willing to do. And they've been working, like you said, you know, working with the board to try to make this site a better site, address all the issues, including lighting. It's just a matter of, if, if we disconnect all the, you know, the lights at the borders, then it's just going to be a dark site and it's not going to be a safe atmosphere, so.
But I don't, I don't think anyone is suggesting that you have zero lighting on your site. The issue is you need to design the lighting, so it's not also lighting the neighbor, right? The level of lighting on the Highland Boulevard neighbor has to also be acceptable to that person, and it doesn't look like it's a little light. It looks like it's, let me just it looks like it's actually, it's like go back to lights on. You still have the pole light disconnected in most of the studies, so. Here. Yeah, for some reason, this one is lumen planted, three feet lights on pre-adjustment. Lumen plant atop of fence pre-adjustment. Yeah, you have very high, you know, 10, 10 lumens at the property line.
Which I'm looking at that plan right now, where I just want to see where exactly is the 10 you're looking at, if you don't want.
It's nine and a half.
Okay.
Underneath the pole light, at the fence, at top of fence.
So.
There, there's a building, so, you know, I don't know where the building is interfering. So there's, that's another adjustment that you make, right? But it's, it's six in the front yard. And it's six again in the backyard, right at the fence.
Right.
So that's high, right?
So that, so basically the adjustments that we're proposing to change out the light fixtures to dark skies compliant, or we reduce the, reduce the lighting, the light intensity of those fixtures themselves, plus also adding shields facing the adjacent property to, to prevent light spillage over it. So it'll be just directed on to the station property.
Right. Okay, well, this is your, this is your department, but at the moment, just turning the lights off is obviously the solution.
Right, it's not, it's not something that either anybody wants, so.
All right, so I'm gonna, for lack of a better idea, I think we need to do what you suggested before, which is to make the correct, the changes and then do another set of test tests. So. So how much time then? Three months?
Um, based on like kind of direction on a previous hearing, so you don't want to request too little time and come back, so. If we could get maybe four months.
Okay.
Because they're going to have to pull electrical permits to switch out the fixtures, get them out to the switch and re-study and everything like that, so.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. You, okay. Okay, new case is item number 15, 18285BZ2091120thStreetBrooklyn. Uh-oh. That's Elise again. Sorry, I lost my screen here for some reason. Sorry, go ahead. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you. Elise Foladair from Eric Palatnick PC. I spoke with the owner right before, right after your comments, right before the hearing. And he agrees to paint the walls and the door. We'll get a no parking sign photograph, and if it's not there, make it sure it's there. And the tenant was put in, it is a circular tenant, like news, you know, news circular. I don't know how to describe it, like paper circulars. I don't know how to call them.
You mean those things that they put under your door?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's like a circular's business. We wrote that in the last submission in March. I think Commissioner Brown noted that, Atlee Brown. And it was put in, in January, they took over, and they are there, even though that sign is still up, that says for sale.
Ah, okay. But so is there, what is their operation? I mean, because this is for a contractor storage site, that's not the same, it's a different use.
So they're almost done getting a CO. And it was the same hours of operation and the same like trashed and everything. I can, if there's anything more you want me to find out about it, I can.
Is this still a use group 16?
So this is the problem. So it's like a change in use, so that makes it not an extension of time.
Okay.
Because I don't even know what kind of a business it is. Is it printing or are they just receiving?
No, they're just distributing.
So it's, it's.
And they hold them there.
They what?
Like have the circulars there. They don't, I don't believe they create them and they distribute them, but I can, I can get more information about this.
Okay, so you need to find out what is the use group for this thing.
Okay, no problem.
Certainly not a contractor's establishment, right? Or maybe, I don't know, but you know, what is the use? And I think you're going to need to file these as amendments, because it's a different use.
Okay. If it's the same use group, does it have to be filed as an amendment?
I don't think so, no.
I don't.
You're going to say, keeping the same use group, but.
I'm just confirming.
Lower use group.
I don't know. So I tell you what, since this is technical, this is really Carlo's.
Okay.
Car, speak to Carlo Costanza and, and we'll figure out what it is after you find out what is the use. Like what's the official?
Use group.
Designation, right?
No problem.
Okay. All right, let's go to the public. Okay, so the case we're currently discussing is 18218285BZ2091120thStreetBrooklyn. If you wish to discuss, dial in 6465588656. Enter the webinar ID number is 9141622.
If you wish to discuss, dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six, enter the webinar ID number is nine one four sixteen twenty-two seventy ninety-six, press pound. You'll also be asked to enter the participant ID number, which you can ignore and just press pound. Um, when you were in the Zoom room, plus star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. If you are already in the Zoom room, please, please pressure Zoom hands.
Okay, um. So how much time do you think to clear this up? You mean, we file it as an amendment, so you, you may need to anyway.
Yeah, I guess I mean, um. Hmm, I guess, can you give it a month? And then if I file it as an, and then I'll speak with Carlo to see if I'll file it as an amendment, or if it's in the same use group.
Yeah, so figure that one month, the amendment, we can keep it on the same, you're just adding to this existing application, right? So we can, although, is there, there's a notice requirement, right? Yeah.
Yeah, there is a notice requirement, um.
So that wouldn't, that just means you would be. Yeah, you'd have to send notice.
The problem is the summer is coming up and community boards take a break, if you need, um.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know what you wanna do.
Well, let's put it, how about this? Let's do it so there's enough time for notice. Um, so I, we don't go one month and then you adjourn and then, so how about we say, you need twenty, so we say six weeks to submit, which will give you enough time to modify your application, which should not be that big of a deal, right?
Okay.
And then it gives you the twenty days to also notify, so that we keep it on this calendar.
Remember, we have to publish in the bulletin too.
Because, because all this stuff is coming up, can we actually just do a solid two months or something?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't think this through like you guys just did, so, all right, two months.
I'm gonna, I'm making a note or. Okay, let's do it like that, I don't see anyone calling in. Okay, thanks very much.
No problem.
Okay, item number sixteen, one eighty-three eighty-five BZ, two oh six oh eight, uh, twentieth Street, Brooklyn, extension of time to get a C of O.
Okay.
Don't you have to swear in?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions.
I do. Unfortunately, this has the same problem as the last one, and it's now a limousine rental, but by appointment only. So I think we need to go in the same way as the last one and look into the use group and come back to you.
Limousine rental, so there's that car rental or car storage, different use group.
Eight, wait, that's garage, I think, car storage eight.
All right, so. So let's just do, so let's, we need to go to the public.
Okay, the case we're currently discussing is one eighty-three eighty-five BZ, two oh six eight, twentieth Street, Brooklyn, should you wish to discuss this case, you can dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six, enter webinar ID number is nine one four sixteen twenty-six seventy ninety-six, press pound. You also be required to, you'll be asked to enter the participant ID number, which you do not have to do, just press pound. Then you will press nine, star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. Um, if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand.
Okay, so, um, I just, so Ms. Fullader, since, you know, we wanna make sure we get the notice requirements going, so you don't mess, miss that two month opportunity.
Yeah.
When you file the amendment, please alert, um, who's your project manager here? This is.
Vinroy.
There, there are two different ones, one's Jella, the, and one's.
Okay, so please alert both of them, that this is an amendment that must be noticed, so that it doesn't, um, and, and, um, so that it doesn't sneak by unnoticed, okay?
Totally.
So I, I need Vinroy to acknowledge that he's gonna pay attention to whether this, um, might need to be re-noticed, okay?
I acknowledge, yeah.
Okay, and so to like put a note on your calendar, um, to take a look at whether this is, has been an amendment that would be filed. When does it, so if we have, how much time does it have to be published in advance, also twenty days?
No, I think it's, it's thirty days, but.
Thirty days published, right, okay, so by the end of, um, what are we up to, the eleven, so the, let's say the first week of, um, May, put a note in your calendar to look to see whether the amendment was filed, because it must be noticed like immediately after filing.
And if it's too much pressure, we can do three months, whatever works, I don't wanna.
Yeah. It's not pressure for us, it's that you need to stay on top of it, otherwise we've seen this happen where it doesn't get noticed. You don't get a hearing in time and then mess, okay? So, and staying on top of your case, okay?
Don't forget to pay the fee.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. All right.
Nothing from the public, correct?
From the public, right.
Okay, so we can move on?
Yeah.
Item number seventeen, one seventy-four oh seven BZ, nineteen thirty-five, Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
Need Andy.
There. Um, and Stuart, um, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Um, thank you so much, Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnick PC and Andy from High Point, we'll go through the comments one by one. Uh, first, you began talking about the triangular area behind the building, Andy, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, I'm sorry, um. So, the area behind the building, um, right now is because the, uh, adjacent, uh, commercial building that's right along the lot line, um, and I, the screening and, uh, there's no landscaping there per se. Um, we don't feel that, that's, that's really required. The gravelled areas with the weed barrier that's located there are basically for drainage purposes, it drains better with, through the gravel, the groundwater. Um, so we don't really wanna propose any landscape, we don't feel that, that, based on the area that's required. There's the landscaping along the residential lot lines that, that provides screening currently, so.
Okay, so, you know, the point is, I, I know you're not proposing it, but that was what was required. So it means that the application is out of compliance with the previously approved drawings. I'm not saying necessarily that there shouldn't be landscaping there, but that's what was required on the.
Understood.
So Ms. Fullader, that needs to be indicated that it's not in compliance with that condition, right? I don't know if it was a condition, but it's shown on the drawings, which is essentially a condition, because it says we'll comply with the drawings, right? So, um, uh, but we need photographs, because we don't know what you mean by gravel with weed barrier? I mean, I kind of, what does it really look like, is it well maintained, blah, blah, right? Um, okay, what else? Anything else?
Um, we, uh, heard your lumens level comment and we will, you know, propose, or we will propose modifications and take new lighting levels.
Okay.
And then, uh, few shapes not labeled drain and manhole covers, that's easy enough to fix. And then the next comment I saw is about the air and vac. Andy, I heard the board go back and forth for a while about it, we do believe it's a good location for it, if you want, Andy, he can speak on it, if you don't think it's necessary, he does.
You had, you had all the drivers talking about how they would use it, so leave it alone.
Okay, then we don't need to.
The issue, the issue one was about, um, the CO, what's?
Oh, that's the last, and then the last issue is about construction violations slash CEO.
Yeah.
What remains to be done, so last, Andy.
Yeah, so I, I looked into those violations, that we have been working on them, basically what it was is they weren't major construction violations, um, from what I have from my permit staff is that they were, I believe related to, to sign applications, but they're going through a DOB audit, which is why it's taking a bit longer, we have to get through the audit, uh, satisfy the DOB and then close those out. Um, they're also working on the, uh, applications generally, I guess, involved with the completion of the construction. Um, so that, we're working on those to close everything out and we'll get the C of O once that's done.
Okay, all right, um. So it's really, it's the violations that are holding up completion of the CO.
Yeah, yeah, because, and it's because they're in order, it's taking longer to get them resolved, so this is, shouldn't be, there's no issues with it, it's just the process takes longer, so.
Okay, all right, thanks, um. What else, what else, I think that's it, okay, let's go to the public.
Stuart, the case that we're currently discussing is one seventy-four oh seven BZ, nineteen thirty-five, Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn, this is an extension of term, time and waiver of the rules. If you wish to speak regarding this application, dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six, enter the webinar ID number, nine one four sixteen twenty-six seventy ninety-six, pound. You will then press pound instead of the participant ID number. You will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hands.
Okay, how much time do you need to submit the materials on, it's really what we're talking about is the lighting?
Yeah.
Um, a couple, a few months, just to, there's, you know, a few, uh, shielded things, I believe we're proposing, and then we'll go out and retake the levels, so.
So the same four months?
Um, yeah, if you can give us that, that'd be fun.
Just one thing, Matt, you mentioned something about the tax lots and the bin numbers or something?
Um, no, that's the same thing about violations, that I was finding violations on other bin numbers, it's kind of a strange thing, you know, when DOB starts to change their whatever, the, the bin numbers to reflect new tax lot numbers or whatever, a lot of the times the comments drop out. And you have to go look at the historical bins where they say they're obsolete, but the obsolete bin is the one that's got all the information. I don't know why it doesn't travel forward, but anyway. Um, okay, so I'm making a note, four months to submit. Okay.
Next item, item number eighteen, six dash fourteen BZ, twenty-five twenty-five Victory Boulevard, Staten Island. Do you, uh, Ms. Fullader? Fullader, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnick PC and with Andy from High Point Engineering. I guess the first comment for twenty-five twenty-five Victory I'd like to bring up is the hours of operation. Uh, we both looked at the resolutions together and we saw delivery hours, but we didn't see hours of operation in the conditions or anything.
Okay, in the resolution you're talking about?
Yeah, did not see that. So I wasn't unsure where you were reading that. And we saw trash hours and delivery hours, but not hours of operation.
Okay, we'll find out, but you know what, rather than.
Okay.
Waiting around, because, um, again, this is a com- a conversation with Carlo. If you could just look, click carefully, this is for Ms. Fullader. If you could look carefully at the resolution and the, um, and the conditions and the discussion in the resolution, in case it didn't come into conditions, and make sure that they match what you're proposing.
Okay, no problem.
That's one issue, and then the other is to come, a conversation with Carlo about the, and, and I know that he's not here right now, he's in a meeting, um, uh, a discussion with Carlo about these kind of minor amendments to the drawings and whether there's a problem.
The other thing is we don't, we just wanted to be more accurate, but well, still, the signage is still in compliance and, and et cetera, so we, we don't necessarily, unless Andy corrects me and I'm wrong, but I don't think we necessarily even need an updated set, it's just this set is more accurate, like they're minor modifications.
So I appreciate the act, the idea of maintaining accuracy, I think it's a good idea, if there's like some, as opposed to X years from now, you come back and then they say, well, wait a minute, it doesn't look like this. And easily made it look like this. So I like the idea of the accuracy, I just wanna make sure you're not plunging into amendment territory by these tiny little changes. Like we had another case recently, which might have been yours, where there was a change on one little drawing.
A little signage and then masonry, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we deal with it the same way, like for instance, that list, um, that the architect provided, that says, you know, what the changes are, instead of having drawings, we just note on the resolution, the following things were changed. But no drawings were submitted, and that way at least the, the next reviewing body will know that you're still in compliance, even though you changed the sign or whatever. You know, that, that's another way of addressing it, so let's just figure that part out, um.
And then you asked, um, if it's, the station is operating, yes, it is, and the trash was about what it, how it operates as well in the last submission. And the remediation, you know, is an ongoing process and will be removed eventually.
Oh, I thought it was already.
Oh, maybe it's already, sorry, oh, maybe it's already.
Let's be, so the, the construction was recently completed at the site, um, and where we started the sign off process and closed out all the related applications, as well as any, um, applications that were old on the property that may not have been part of this, this work, but still need to be closed to get the C of O. Uh, the remediation system has been removed from the property, so that's no longer there.
Okay, there you go, sorry.
All right, but. Okay, so here's kind of what I'd like to do. Uh, I'm, I'm feeling that it's not an amendment, and that the, our way to deal with it is either we're okay with accepting revised drawings that are not material, or we don't take drawings and we just make a list of the changes. So, um, let's go to the public and then I think we could close this, and if I'm wrong, we can always reopen, okay?
Thank you.
The case we're currently discussing is six dash fourteen BZ, twenty-five twenty-five Victory Boulevard, Staten Island. This is an extension of time to complete construction, should you wish to discuss, please dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six, and enter the webinar ID number nine one four sixteen twenty-six seventy ninety-six, press pound. You will then press pound in lieu of the participant ID number. You can also then press, the next step will be press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're on the phone, and if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand.
I'm gonna give it a, a little bit for people to call in, how much time do you need to, uh, make those little bits, uh, let's see. Well, it's more like checking in and, um. I'm just looking to see whether there was anything else that needed to be added. Just, you're gonna be just checking, carefully read the resolution, compare it to what you got today, whether there's any difference, okay? Um, so, uh, I'll leave it at, either we're going to accept the, the drawings with minor um, corrections or and, or we just say that, or we stated in the resolution. All right, okay, so I'd like to make a, so how much time then?
Uh, I guess, I guess it depends on the direction received from the board, whether, you know, we just, there'd be, like you said, uh, chairperson, whether it just be included in the resolution. Uh, there's not really many, many changes that we need to make beyond just checking it over with the past resolution, so.
So, so the only thing that's not shown on the drawings is the removal, like a stated statement that the remediation equipment was removed. Like, you know, to show the difference between prior time, there should be like a little note that says remediate, location of remediation equipment removed or whatever, removed of equipment.
Okay, I, it's, it's, it's not shown on the propos- well, proposed conditions plan, but yeah, we can add something that, if, if you want revised plans, if, otherwise it's just listed in the resolution that is removed.
Okay, so this conversation with Carlo could take place this week, so you know which way you're going.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, so I would say two weeks is probably enough, right? Either you have drawings that you make one little notation on, or you just take the drawings, we take them out of the record.
Could you make it, um, a month, just to, just in case, just in case something comes up, that's all, I don't wanna extend it, but if, you know, something we don't foresee may come. Could you make it a month, just to, just in case, just in case something comes up, that's all? I don't want to extend it, but if, you know, something we don't foresee may come up.
Okay, we'll do that. All right, so then I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Palmetto?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, one twenty eight fifteen B Z through one thirty fifteen B Z, six eighty, six eighty two, six eighty four, Van Duser Street, Staten Island. Who's this is? Ron Rosati. I see, okay. Somebody's got a lot of background. Okay, go ahead, Ron. Uh, do you affirm, raise your hand? Do you affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, I do. Um, good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Ron Rosati, representing the applicant. Uh, I heard your comments earlier today regarding the lack of D O.
Uh-oh.
The activity, Madam Chair, you're correct.
Sorry, sorry, Ron, Ron, you're breaking up or freezing. We can't hear you, we, we can't follow you.
Um.
Talk slower, at least.
I'm sorry, okay. Uh, regarding the D O B activity, uh, we cannot file with D O B until we have the city planning approval. Um, so once we have that in hand, we will file at D O B. And, uh, then you'll see that on the BIS system. That's why there has been no activity, uh, for the last few years. Um, in regarding a timeline, uh, glad to enter that into the record. I did speak to the architect. Uh, after we do get city planning approvals, he did say it would take approximately four months to get, uh, D O B sign offs, another eighteen months for construction. And then another three months, uh, to obtain the C of O. Uh, once again, glad to enter that timeline into the record if needed.
Okay, so you know, this is, he says eighteen months per construction. This is a complicated site. So we should be realistic about the kind of, um, site work that needs to be done. It's on a steep slope, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, don't just throw out, eighteen months is the word you use on every project, no matter whether it's a fifty story building or a four story building. So it should reflect actual estimates, okay?
Okay, I'll flush that out for you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, go to the public. So this is, put the screen up. So this is the, application number is one twenty eight fifteen B Z through one thirty fifteen B Z. Six eighty, six eighty two, six eighty four, Van Duser Street Staten Island. This is an extension of time to complete construction of that home. And the dial in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six and to webinar ID number nine one four sixteen twenty six seventy ninety six pound. Will then be required to press pound and press pound instead of the participant ID number. The next step will be press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to allow you to speak. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. All right. Um, so how much time to submit the timeline?
It shouldn't take more than a day to put that together.
Okay, so I'll write one year, just a bit. I don't know if I can accommodate, but anyway. All right, so I'm just going to give it a little more time for people to call in. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close on this. Chair Palmetto?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Someone has background noise, so.
Yeah, it sounds like water, water running or something.
Yeah, it sounds like we're under a waterfall. Okay. All right, item number twenty, twenty twenty one sixty eight A, three forty eight A, Deh, Deceus Street, Staten Island. Hey. Bernard Coe, I see his hands up, okay. Do you want to unmute Mr. Coe and Ms. Murphy and join his panelists, please?
Good morning.
Good morning. Who else is joining you, Mr. Coe?
I have Kelly Murphy from the S T A.
Mm-hmm. That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Murphy, would you please join his panelist and mute yourself, please? Is she going to participate, Mr. Coe?
Um, she, she might.
Okay.
But it's, I think it's okay, if there's anything that.
She's connecting, okay, she's coming up. Give her a second. Hmm. I don't know, Jell is just having an issue, I don't know. Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Coe, I mean, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, you can proceed, Mr. Coe.
Great. Uh, my name's Bernard Coe, I'm a principal of L H P Architects, the LLC, and I'm the applicant on behalf of New York City School Construction Authority. Good morning, Honorable Chair Palmetto, Vice Chair Chanda, Commissioner Otley Brown, Commissioner Sheta, Commissioner Shabetta, and Deputy Chief Inspector Daly. I heard your comments earlier, um, during the review, uh, session this morning, and I offer some of these responses here. Um, the first item being the, uh, regarding the title searches that were inconclusive, um.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Coe, sir, to the speaker, it's very hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you don't mind, put my headphones on, it'll be easier.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay. One second, just change my. Apologize.
Okay, can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, um, with regard to the title search comment, um, uh. D O T has recognized that the, uh, title search was inconclusive. However, um, they stated that they will not continue to ask the S T A to construct the unbuilt portion of Stetzer Street, um, even in light of that fact. And they do remain supportive of the project, um, to continue, continue moving forward. Um, and they even indicated that they were appreciative of the S T A's, um, continuous work to meet their requirements. So, um, with, with that said, um, they do, as I said, uh, support the project in their three, uh, twenty one twenty two memo that they issued. Um, I would like to, um, further clarify, um, that our initial submission did include a request for the waiver of the D O T improvements for both Stetzer Street and Island Street. Um, and S T A has since come to an agreement with D O T to improve Island Street. And, uh, still leave Stetzer Street in its current and actual state. Um, this is already depicted in the latest master plan and B P P drawings for the project, which, uh, as, um, stated in that, uh, March twenty first letter, uh, D O T has supported.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm a little confused. We have a, we have a builder's pavement plan.
Correct.
And we also have these approval letters from school safety and D O T.
Correct.
There's a list of things, um, yeah, March twenty one. There are a list of things, and I want to know whether there is a difference between the extent, between what it says on those things about Stetzer. And what, if there's any different agreement, because I'm, I, we can't.
No.
Have a distinction. So is it true that on this March, whatever, this is March twenty first letter?
Mm-hmm.
That everything on here is shown on the builder's pavement plan and will be performed?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, so I, I'm trying not to confuse our record. If, if the March twenty first letter and the builder's pavement plan reflect each other.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no difference. Between this and now, then we shouldn't go into the history because it's just confusing the record, right? We have these approvals for that drawing. And as long as you're going to perform what's on that drawing, because that's what our conditions are going to be. That's where we should stay, okay?
That's correct. Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Okay, um. Yes, uh, so I concur that the conditions on that letter will be met by the, uh, final design. All right, the second, um, item that was brought up was about the F T N Y approval sign off. Um, so we have sign off for, we have X approvals for the fire protection plan. And we have the special conditional acceptance of the fire safety and evacuation plan. Um, and I was just made aware, just a few moments ago, that there is another requirement from F T N Y. For a. For a, uh, application with the Bureau of Operations, the City Planning Unit for the Fire Apparatus Access. We were not aware of this, uh, requirement. At this time.
What do you mean, you're weren't aware of the, what requirement?
Uh, of this additional filing with the Fire Department, um, through their technical management for city planning unit review.
I see. So it, uh, this is a little different, and I see Jell's hand up. Whenever we do a G C L thirty six application, because the street is not a map street, we ask Fire Department to, uh, confirm, and they'll speak during the public session in a second. We ask them to confirm that access to the site is, is, um, acceptable to them because they would have to bring their apparatus to the site, right? So, um, normally, we, we get, we, not normally, we always on these G C L thirty sixes get a letter from them, and sometimes they object. And then modifications to the application need to be made and, and until they're accepting of it. So that's what this is about. Um, and I don't know about that separate application that you have to make, but we'll hear from Fire Department in, in a minute, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to need something in writing from them before we can, um, decide on the case. I'm not sure whether we can close before. Go ahead, Jella.
Oh, we did, um, I actually, Mr. Coe, I sent him that requirement, but it came in an email from John Daly.
What did?
Um, yeah, the request for the Bureau of Operations Fire Apparatus Access application. That is a request that came from John Daly via email.
Okay. Chief John Daly.
Chief, Chief Daly.
Yeah, okay, uh, all right. Fire apparatus, what is it? It's a fire apparatus, what is it?
Um, the email says Bureau of Operations City Planning Unit Application for Fire Apparatus Access.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, let's go to the public. So the case we are currently discussing is item number twenty, twenty twenty one sixty eight A, three forty eight A. Deceus Street Staten Island. This is proposed development of a school by the School Construction Authority, seeking a waiver of the General City Law, Section thirty six. Should you wish to discuss, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You will enter the webinar ID number nine one four sixteen twenty six seventy ninety six and press pound. You will then press pound in lieu of the participant ID number. You will then press star nine, once you're in the Zoom room, to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
For S T A, uh, what is the timeline for, um, to start the construction? And I think the reason I'm asking this is by when all the approvals are needed to start the process.
Um, thank you, Commissioner China, for that question. Um, yes, it, it's a very tight timeline. We are already, um, behind on our original target dates. Um, we were being asked to prepare the final, um, approved drawings for bidding, um, uh, for May eleventh. Um, and this is required to meet the September twenty twenty five, um, school opening.
Sorry, what's the this mean?
I'm sorry.
You said, this is required to meet the twenty twenty five opening. What's this?
Yes, this is the, um, five, uh, eleven twenty twenty two turnover date of the documents to start the bidding process.
So I guess, wait, let me just finish. I need to clarify what he means by bidding. So the bidding drawings don't have to do with approvals. The bidding drawings are construction documents that go out to the construction companies that are bidding, right?
That's correct, but we cannot do that until we get all the approvals in place.
Sorry, why can't you start bidding until you get the approvals in place?
This, this is, um, basically requirements from the S T A that the drawing should be, um, ready for permit, once they, um, once they're out for, uh, for bid.
So. That the drawings are so that, in other words, not ready for permit because you haven't applied to D O. What's the status of D O B?
So with D O B, we have, um, addressed all, um, their objections. The only remaining objections were to, um, uh, obtain the zoning waiver and the B S and A approval. We've already achieved the zoning waiver approval. And we're only, uh, waiting for the B S and A, uh, approval.
Okay, okay. So there's the mayor override, in other words, finish that, and then city plannings to the authorization and certification, finish that, okay? And, um, okay. All right, so let, let's, I was going to be waiting to hear from, anyway, we, we were in the public review process, so can we please hear from Fire Department? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Okay, great, thank you. I, the, the reason we require a filing with the Bureau of Operations City Planning Unit is due to the fact that the street is unmatched. Uh, we do need to review that we have the adequate width. I'm sure the street has been there for a hundred years, but, uh, a filing is required, uh, for, for any of these G C L applications that there are before the B S A. So that is the reason why you are required to file without city planning you.
I have a question, sorry.
Wait, oh, please, let's just stay with Fire Department. We're trying to get their sign off, right?
Right.
Okay, so the, so in terms of the adequate width and all of that stuff, when, when we do these G C L applications and you eventually give us some sort of sign off that you have no. that you have no objection, not in every case, but in the cases where you do, where you say you have no objection to the application, is it that they've already made the application to this apparatus?
That is correct, that they already filed an application for, for the City Planning Unit Plan Review. To date, we have no such application. The other application that the architect referred to are the fire safety plan, that's, you know, which is filed with the unit here in fire prevention, and that is, you know, to inform us of the types of fire suppression system that they, that are existing. We can relay that information to responding units when they finish construction of the building. So responding units know what, where to go for the fire command station, where the shut off valves are for the suppression system, the locations of the fire department connection for sprinkler or stamp pipe, such as that. But now, unfortunately, for fire apparatus road, which is reviewed by City Planning Unit, a completely different unit, that's why we require the additional filing.
Okay, and so to file, so the application, Mr. Coe, has not been filed yet, is that correct?
That, that's correct, we weren't aware of that until now.
Okay, so how, how much time can, can you work with SCA to help them fill out this application, so it can be?
Expedited.
I did send a link to, to Jella, and I know she will forward it to you, to the information to you. And because this is a school, we, Captain Malloy, who's in the City Planning Unit, I'm gonna meet him later this afternoon and ask that he expedite, we'll may, we'll put the cart before the horse, meaning we'll try and get the letter to, you know, this week, before you even filed your application. We'll always update our system somehow, I don't want to delay any, any school project. So I will talk to him and, and ask for a request.
Okay, that's great, alright, that's what I want to know, okay, yeah, Commissioner Shonda?
Yeah, no, I think, thank you, Chief Daly, for, you know, so proactively looking into it and making sure things get resolved. My question was, since it's an existing school that is being enlarged, just as a, more for my theoretical understanding, would it still have to go through the same review process? We have an existing school that needs to go through the, that also is getting the necessary fire system supplies and other things, would it still require?
Yes, Vice Chair, it does still require, I mean, the conditions have changed, and also, in that, you know, the Fire Department had not really had authority over these unmarked streets, really, to the two thousand eight fire code became in effect, and I'm sure the school is a lot older, and so we do want to gather, gather that information. Well, most people may think that the plans are gonna sit in a, in an office somewhere. No, we do distribute these to the Borough Command, to Division, to Battalion, even at administrative levels. So when they're arriving, any unit that arrives at its fire scene, we're hoping that they have the floor plans, that they can better assist the people evacuating from the building, and also to be proactive in fighting any fires in the, in the buildings. So we do use this information very thoroughly.
Thank you.
Kind of a stickler to get plans.
No, thank you for verification, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Alright, Commissioner Sheta, go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
I, I got it, thank you, I did the click, but it didn't go through, I don't know why. You based that review, you review on what, on the survey and the site plan, that's all?
That, that is correct, yes, we just review the site plan, the survey, survey plan, that they have the more accurate and more descriptive information, but they do show us the location of fire hydrants and the distances, which again, is forwarded to administrative units in the field.
Okay. I believe we do, we do have a survey in the file.
Yes.
The plan is there.
Right.
So it should be a matter of weeks or so.
Right, I mean, Mr. Jella had forwarded the link, but due to, Captain Loy, he's a one man shop, and I'm a one man shop, we're trying to catch up on all these things, and, but in this case, we'll, I'm gonna request an expedite, and we'll try to accommodate everybody as fast as we can, we don't wanna delay this project.
Thank you.
Did we already go to the public, I forget? We did?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is close this with the understanding that if we had to, because there was something going on with Fire Department, that we could reopen it, I wanna close it, because I wanna be able to put this on for the last decision in April. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a decision until the very day that the bid documents have to go out, and that's really a photo finish. So, and maybe wouldn't therefore be allowed to send out the bid documents, I don't know how that all works. So, so I'd like to make a motion to close with the understanding that we are not assuming Fire Department's isn't going to be looking at this carefully and might have comments, in which case, there will need to be response to Fire Department, okay? So, but it's just in the issue of expediting the review of the school, okay? Alright, so motion to close. Chair Pro-Meter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta? I didn't hear you. Thank you. So this will be on for the April twenty fifth hearing, okay? Thank you. Anything else? That's it? Okay, this concludes the public hearing for April eleventh, twenty twenty two. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Chair.